For eighteen years, Nadine D F has lived only on the Isle of Palms, but she's seeing a lot of changes that she's not happy about. That's one of the reasons why she's running for the Isle of Palm City Council. Today, I talk one-on-one with Nadine for this edition of Quinton's Close Ups. And if you haven't already, subscribe to my YouTube channel and like Quinton's Close Ups on Facebook. Nadine D F, welcome to Quinton's Close Ups.
Thank you, thank you. Thank you for having me today.
Oh, you're very welcome.
I appreciate it.
Oh, you're welcome anytime. I know that you obviously are an eighteen-year-old, eighteen-year resident, that is, out the Isle of Palms. And you actually have three children that grew up on the island. They attend, obviously, Sullivan's Island Elementary School, Moochay Middle, uh, school on, on Coleman Boulevard, and of course, Wando High School. And you actually have one playing every sport at the Isle of Palms Recreation, Recreation Center. And now, obviously, you're running for Isle of Palm City Council. Let me ask you this, Nadine. How did your relationship begin with the constituents of the Isle of Palms?
Uh, with the constituents, um, just being a mother. I came here as a mother. Um, I was, I already had two kids when we moved here. And they were little, and then just through the community, it's a great community to be in. I mean, wherever you live, where you can't, you don't have to lock your doors, or at least we didn't. We didn't lock the doors in the past. Those were the days.
Yes, yes, yes.
But the kids are very safe, and you know, it's, it's a nice neighborhood. Got to know a lot of moms, and then there's like the morning, you know, morning out, uh, with moms in the neighborhood. And it's just through the schools, the PTA, and just, just being a mother.
Yes, indeed.
And a dog lover, by the way. A dog lover too.
Yes, indeed, absolutely, absolutely. And that brings me to my obvious question. What is the quality life on the Isle of Palms?
You know, it's, it's, you can't compare, it's unique. You don't find communities that are physically isolated, you know, by water. So it makes us a unique community, um, a very desirable area. And it used to be mostly residents on the island. Um, and just average, you know, we moved here, we, we bought a ranch, a small ranch, you know, J.C. Long Home. We downsized to get that house from Norris Charleston. So just to give you an idea, we chose to, to live in an area where the kids could grow up better, but smaller house. So you do make some sacrifices to live on the island financially, but I think it's worth it, you know? Um, I'm sorry, sir, what was your question?
Oh, no worries. And you talk about sacrifices, Nadine. What are the sacrifices that the residents are making right now on the Isle of Palms with all of these changes?
Yes, are you familiar with some of the changes that have been going on?
Yes, ma'am.
Oh, you are? Okay, well.
Every step of the way, yes, ma'am.
You know, I'm in a country where, I'll give you an example. Where if you put your trash in the wrong bin, you get a ticket. They actually have something called the Trash Police. If you, whatever you do, they go and check. So what I'm trying to get at is, the more regulations we keep putting on people, the more they're gonna find ways to get around it, and the more it's gonna cost to enforce it. Why don't we just, sometimes, um, if somebody wants to, I'll give you an example. What if we forced everybody to use the recycling bin on the Isle of Palms? If we made that a mandate? And if you don't recycle, we'll go through your trash and give you a ticket for not recycling. I'm just using an extreme concept, but it's not extreme because we, I, I'm in a country where this is a law, a mandate. So what happens is, people start to feel like they're being checked. And so they're, it's, you tend to cheat the system. Whereas if you have a little bit less regulations and just some common sense safety ones, you tend to have more people going, buying into doing whatever it is you're recommending versus being forced to. So I think what I'm trying to get at is, regulations, um, a lot of government involvement in people's lives in a small community is not a good solution, um, to create that sense of community.
So let me ask you, why Nadine D F, why Isle of Palm City Council?
Well, you know, my neighbors and I have been talking about this for years. Nobody wanted to do it. Every so many years, we go, you should run, you should run, you know? And this year, it's like, somebody's gotta run. Somebody's gotta go on there with common sense and just look at truly just the residents issues. And, um, so I volunteered.
What are the three biggest issues right now on the Isle of Palms? We know most of them, you know, from the news and what we've heard in the community.
What we have is, um, a break in, in, um, relations with other communities at first. We have, um, I guess a council that, you know, did their best, but at the same time, passed an awful lot of mandates. Um, and including, um, example, the time they passed no parking on both sides of Palm Boulevard. I mean, yes, it was officially a pandemic, but at the same time, that doesn't really necessarily, yes, it might have less people coming to the beach, but it doesn't really solve your pandemic problem on the beach. Because you're putting everybody at front beach. So what, what that resulted in is a breach in our parking plan, which we had already approved of the Department of Transportation. So I, I, I feel like three of the biggest issues is restoring our relationships, uh, collaborating. I'm not saying giving away things, or, but just truly looking at, how do we get back where we were a couple of years ago with our relationships with the state, the county, and the DOT?
What is the relationship with Sullivan's Island, the town of Mount Pleasant?
Well, I think Sullivan's Island is also a barrier island, so they have similar issues. Um, with Mount Pleasant, you know, a lot of folks in Mount Pleasant did not like being told that they can't park at the beach. So we, the constituents there, obviously, were very involved in their council meetings to try to restore beach parking on Palm Boulevard. Um, so I'm not, you know, we do have a traffic problem, but we've had a traffic problem for a long, long time. I've been here eighteen years, and every summer, you know, you gotta time your time on and off the island. It's just, it's a way of knowing. If you live there, it's one of the things that you know about. Um, you get around by golf cart, things like that, but, um, that's one of the issues, so.
And how transparent do you think, Nadine, Nadine, is the Isle of Palm City Council right now?
You know, I think there needs to be more open discussions. I think, um, the residents need to see the conversations going on. Uh, I, I mean, there are a lot of things you do need to discuss in executive session. Personnel matters, um, contractual matters. So those should not be done in public session. I, I totally understand that. I think some things leading to a vote should be discussed in open session, especially if it doesn't have to do with contractual or personnel.
And let me ask you, what qualifies you to be on the Isle of Palm City Council?
Oh, well, um, as far as qualifications, I've been, I started a, I founded a charter school in South Carolina, uh, founding board member. So I've been board chair since twenty seventeen. So that's been a couple of years. So as board chair, I'm familiar with Robert's Rules and all the rules governing policies on a council meeting. And I know about forums and what you should and shouldn't do. You shouldn't be texting, group texting or things like that. You shouldn't be on, um, there's a lot of rules when you're on, in public office that you need to follow, so. That's serving the public, really, and taxpayers. That's what I do right now.
And you talk about texts, obviously, there was a big issue about that, obviously, this past, a couple of months ago. When you heard about that as a resident of the Isle of Palms, where were you emotionally?
I just, I actually honestly did not think there was anything maniacal about it. I think some people just weren't trained. Um, I think whoever started this group text maybe didn't realize that this is not, you know, I, I, maybe we need more training when you become a council member on Robert's Rules or the policies. And I think that may be what was lacking, um, you know? I don't know what the text said, but I think that's, I don't think that major decisions were made by text, but I think the fact that you can't, like, I cannot communicate with board members, you know, in a group. Anything having to do, even setting up, you know, you just have to send blind copy emails and everybody responds individually. But that's something that I know, and I, maybe it's possible quite a few people didn't know that. I, I don't know where the training is on that.
And what type of training would you advocate if you were on council today?
Oh, I, I think the first thing for all onboarding and even existing members, there should be mandatory annual training, just a refresher on Robert's Rules and what the policies are for being a public officer.
Yes, ma'am.
I think that's the first step.
And speaking of public officers, as you know, Ken Briscoe is now the interim fire chief for the Isle of Palms. To tell, obviously, a permanent replacement is to come. But he said this quote, "I'm very honored to serve in this important leadership capacity to advance the Isle of Palms Fire Department and serve a special community. I will be initially focused on listening to the men and women of the department, determining what the key priorities and needs are over the next ninety to a hundred twenty days, and working to ensure essential safety measures are in place to move the fire department and the community forward." What are those key priorities, Nadine, and needs that the community are actually voicing right now?
As far as the community goes, I think it's just to, for, um, and as far as the fire department goes, it's just to be, make sure that they're able to get to the fires. There are some streets they probably can't get down. I believe, you know, if you've ever seen Isle of Palms on a busy memorial weekend, how do you get a fire truck down Palm Boulevard or anywhere, you know? Um, so there's issues like that. I think, um, also there are some streets that the truck literally cannot go onto. So we need a backup plan. And this chief is right. He needs to listen to his own staff first. They have the experience. Um, their concerns and their issues, and then also the residents. Because the people who have the job have the experience and notice the issues first.
And obviously, speaking of hiring, how would you change the city code on hiring in the future if you're elected?
Um, well, I would recommend, I can't do anything, I'm one person, one vote, but I would recommend to the council members that, um, basically, the practices we do as, as, as an educational facility, public taxpayers, is you have a director and you have management team. It is for them to bring to us, the board or the council, you know, what their recommendations are. And, um,
Right, right.
And basically, look at their recommendations and then ask questions. We could request additional candidates, we could, you know, but it's not for us to go and do all that work. And so we then would support the director or recommend an additional, we would then look at the resumes. Yes, the council should hire a chief. All management positions should be hired by council.
Yes, ma'am. And, and I'll get back to that in a second, but let me talk to you about quality life again. How do you accommodate, uh, multi-use trails, wildlife areas, and low-pack drainage ideas by creating pockets of interconnected, protected, open spaces that allow for interactions with nature?
Yeah, sorry, Mr. Washington, and let me just re-understand that. How do we integrate nature into?
Yeah, how do you accommodate multi-use trails, wildlife areas, and low-pack, impact drainage ideas by creating pockets of interconnected, protected, open spaces that allows for interactions with nature?
Oh, well, yeah, that is a great point. Um, I, I think we have very limited resources, natural resources. And basically, when they're gone, they're gone forever. So protecting that in a barrier island is, is like a no, it's like a no-brainer. It's just common sense. So that should be a priority, and how do you do that? I think, um, you could team up with funds out there that, um, that do this, and like NGOs that assist in purchasing and where you can't build all the properties, and it's like a tax write-off for a lot of investors. That's a great way to do this, and then that way is forever protective as a nature spot. And we need more of those, absolutely.
And what are those historic sites on the island, natural areas and scenic vistas, obviously, that are worth recognizing?
Like, my children could answer that better, my goodness. They roam that island, and they know things that I wouldn't even want to step into physically. Uh, there's some marsh areas, there's some, I mean, my kids have done, you know, I have a twenty-one-year-old, an eighteen-year-old, and a twelve-year-old. And they've all fished, boated, and done everything that every teenager could do on and off these little barrier areas. So basically, I, I, the actual spots, I'm not too sure where they are. Um, I would have to look at what the recommendations are. But, um, anything that we could actually grab and protect and purchase at this time as a city, I think would be money really well spent for the future generations.
And speaking of future generations, what recreational opportunities in the city, or on the island, I should say, should be diversified that will be open to everyone?
Um, you mean everyone as a non-residence?
Oh, yes, ma'am. Yeah, diversity-wise, yes, ma'am.
Um, well, the whole island should be open. I mean, it's public, it's a public beach. So, you know, the, the marsh, you know, unless it's private property, it's an open island. I can't imagine restricting that.
And let me turn over to businesses. How do you help local businesses boost their competitiveness among other businesses that are coming to the island?
Well, we have limited number of businesses on the island because there's only so much commercial space. So, um, the beach company does own quite a bit of, of it in the front beach area. You've got, of course, the Marina Project with the restaurant and the Marina. And then Wild Dunes has its own business. Um, so to, because of the lack of competition, really, there's only so many businesses on the island. Um, you, you, you could market the island to promote the businesses, but in reality, as a council member, you want the businesses to be viable for the residents as well as themselves. But at the same time, your focus should be on the residents. I don't know if you see where I'm going.
And let me focus on the Marina. What should the city do right now?
Well, they've done a lot, so. What should they undo? I don't know. Whatever they could, uh, there's, there's been some good and some bad, so, over the years. You, you know, this is a legal matter, to be honest. So a legal council, maybe additional legal council, needs to look at some of these things that you could claw back on in these leases, if some of them are bad. I think the restaurant, it was a triple net, it's fine. I don't, I don't believe that there were any issues there. Parking needs to be available to all residents. So if the city owns the Marina lot, the land and the, the space, that means the taxpayers own it. The taxpayers would be all the residents. And how could the taxpayers end up not getting to park there or use the space and have to pay for parking or boat launches? I think that should be part of your tax dollars.
What type of public parking would you have on, say, Forty Second Avenue?
Uh, Forty Second Avenue. We already have, um, a section of Forty Second near the beach access, which is a handicap beach access. Are you talking about that area?
Yeah, that, that too, yes, ma'am.
That little strip?
Forty Second, yeah.
Well, there's easements, you know, you can't park so many feet from the pavement. Um, so you have to look at where the lot lines are and where the city property, city lines are. So Palm Boulevard is a very large, open easement area, but you don't have that in the rest of the island. And so you can't have this congestion spreading to residential areas. That's a designated area. They've done, part of the plan was to have it for residents only during certain hours. And I understand that, you know, I do really understand that. It's, um, it's an area that's maintained. It doesn't belong to the state. And so, you know, it belongs to the, to the city. So the maintenance and everything else falls into the city. And if for a couple of hours a day, the residents can park there, because on certain days, it's hard to, to get around. But, um, I think there's plenty of parking elsewhere that Forty Second is not, you know, that section is open after certain hours and off-season. It used to be anyways, off-season, open to everybody. It's about six parking spots we're talking about, Mr. Washington. It's not that much.
Oh, yeah, I've been on, I was just on the Isle of Palms a couple of months ago. But I know SCDOT proposed increased parking on the island, and Secretary Hall obviously backed away from canceling the twenty-fifteen plan that was in place for parking on the island. Do you foresee her, Secretary Hall, pursuing more parking on side streets and actually modifying that twenty-fifteen plan?
I don't think that's right, you know? And I would, I would try to get to the bottom of this as to why. Why are we, I understand the council upset the state residents in general, but let's go back and, and restore that relationship. Because that twenty-fifteen plan was approved by everybody. And if it was approved once by all the parties, and there was a substantial amount of investment put into that plan, um, we spent over two-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars to create that plan alone, not including the time of every council member involved and residents. So I don't, I'm trying to understand why that plan is no longer seen as acceptable to the South Carolina Department of Transportation. If, if there's like minor tweaks, I get it. But let's be honest, you, you have a home and children, you know? Do you really want to have cars pulling in over your kids' wagons in the drive, like, right on the edge? Do you really want to have that in your front lawn every day? And then, you know, people leaving trash in the sides, and this is not a public way. These are residential areas, and no, that's just not right.
Let me get back to businesses with this, Nadine. Let me ask you, would you be in favor of creating a business preservation alliance?
Well, I'm trying to understand how that falls into the resident, residents' benefit, first of all. So we serve residents. We get taxpayers' money. The voters are the residents. Yes, businesses pay taxes, and they're very important to the island. I absolutely understand that. However, a business alliance already exists in some ways, I believe, on the Isle of Palms. There's a group, unofficial maybe, but it's still there. I think their alliance should not be affiliated with, with residents in terms of, if you're a business, yes, you want to get together with a business group. Are we gonna serve commercial interests, or are we gonna serve residential interests? That's really what it boils down to.
What are the current revenue trends on the Isle of Palms?
What is the current, sorry?
Revenue trends.
Um, you're talking about the ATAX?
You can talk about all, yes, ma'am, you can talk about that as well.
From my understanding, a lot of the revenue, uh, there's a, there's a large amount of revenue coming from rentals. Um, both from Wild Dunes and off, you know, in the common area. Um, the percentage that we pay to the Isle of Palms is small on our tax bill compared to what we pay to the state. So we're doing fine financially. We just have to be careful where we're going next.
Uh, how much tax revenue has the island lost over the past two years?
We have spent an awful lot of money on, on projects. So your, those were capitalized. Um, I really don't know, to be honest, I have not looked at the losses. So, um, but I could look into it and get back to you at another time.
Sure, and you've been on the island for close to twenty years. What is the historical population trend on the Isle of Palms?
It's changing. Um, so just to put it this way, I live in a ranch right now. And if I sold my house, there's a very eighty percent chance it will be torn down, and it will be rebuilt into a very large structure. Um, so the trend, since COVID, it's been a little bit skewed. So I, I, let's go pre-COVID. Pre-COVID, the trend was to build rental homes when smaller homes were destroyed. So the reconstruction, the contractors would build larger homes. Not all of them, there's some very good contractors out there that build homes that could be single-family homes, really beautiful ones that, if you really pushed it, could be a rental, you know, a good rental. So, but there are some contractors that build strictly rentals, and what I call mini-hotels on the island. And that takes up more land, more resources, you know? We're talking about more sewer, more water, and it's very taxing on the environment and also on the roads. Think of the number of people into these homes. So the trend I find pre-COVID was an increase in short-term rentals on the island. And it has been increasing steadily. I just don't know that. The data that I saw, I cannot call, say, if it's certified, if it's correct or not. It's not even something I saw, it's word, the council mentioned it a few times.
Okay. Where on the island, Nadine, do you identify and also develop those unique characteristics when it comes to residential, commercial, and mixed use?
Um, the mixed use is, it's, it started off years ago in Palm. So Palm Boulevard is, was, every time, you know, it's a very expensive lot, they realize it makes more money as a rental, easier to sell. So that's now mostly rentals. There's a few residents, but it's become mostly a rental street, the main road, Palm Boulevard. There are very few residents on that street, if you take a look at all the houses.
Oh, yeah.
So that was many years ago, like, probably thirty years ago, when it started. And then when I moved here, there were a couple of houses, about twenty years ago, there were a couple of houses on Cameron. Now you go down Cameron Boulevard, and it's fifty-fifty at least on Cameron. Now, on my block, Hartnett Boulevard, which has always been strictly residential, um, ranches like mine were torn down, are being torn down. They bought them for nine-hundred thousand dollars, the lot. So I don't know what they're gonna put up, but if they put up what I call a, a large rental, with multifamily rental, how is that gonna affect my quality of life in that area? So, um, that's the mixed use, it needs to stop expanding into the residential areas in particular.
And can you, by any chance, identify any housing trends in your community, such as an increase in absentee landlords, mortgage foreclosures, decreasing home values, and other increasing house prices?
Well, there's no decreasing home value anywhere right now in the entire country, I think, except certain pockets. We have increasing home values, tremendous home value increase. I mean, lots are going for triple what they were ten years ago. Um, the trend, you know, sorry, besides the home values, you're saying the?
Yeah, let me, let me ask you this, let's scratch that question. What is the household type on the island?
The household type? It's, it's mixed, mostly families. If, if it's a residential home, it's a family, obviously. If it's, and there are a lot of people that own second homes, and that's great. You know, I would, you know, if I lived in Greenville, I'd love a second home at the beach, you know? And, you know, it doesn't matter, people have second homes, and that's wonderful.
What are the household incomes on the Isle of Palms?
I believe we're second after Sullivan's, in terms of household income.
But then, what is the labor force?
What is the labor force on the Isle of Palms?
Yes, ma'am.
Well, a large portion are retired, um, and the rest, um, you mean the, the residents' labor force? People like me?
Yeah, labor force on the Isle of Palms, yes, ma'am.
Okay, we have a large, a, a, a large portion of our population is retired, if you look at the data.
And how many homes on the Isle of Palms have actually been built at a fairly consistent rate?
How many homes have been built at a fairly consistent rate? I mean, the, the, and we just go in cycles, uh, economic cycles, really. When there's a recession, there aren't many homes built. And if it's, right now, we're in a boom, so it's going up. It's.
And what is the median home price on the Isle of Palms right now, as you know it?
I think it's done exactly what it's done in Mount Pleasant and everywhere else, it's doubled. And I think that's caused by inflationary pressures, which are across the country. All you do is go grocery shopping and see your grocery bills double. So I think it's just flat-out plain inflation that we're dealing with. Um, we do have the factor of more residents, or people are moving to South Carolina, from many northern states in particular, um, from all over the country, really. And that's great. So I know that's, um, it's great for South Carolina in terms of tax revenue and growth, but we have to be careful on the island because we do have limited resources, what we do with that.
And what is the new construction market trend right now on the Isle of Palms?
You know, COVID put a, a bit of a twist into that one, and I'll tell you why. Prior to COVID, the trend was, you build people, unless they bought the lot themselves and want to build a house, that's one thing. But as a But as a contractor and investor coming to the island and buying land, they are building rent, they were building rental homes. I still believe that is what's going on for the most part. When you have a vacant lot, that's what seems to be going up, just looking from the sheer size of it. And I'm not saying I don't wanna own a big house. I do. And I do own one. Um, but what I'm trying to say is, is it's the purpose of the constructions. So the trend is to build large homes that could be used as rentals. That's always been the trend. And it's been, it's been increasing on the island, I find.
How should the Alba Palms manage congestion and demand with all that's going on right now?
Are you talking about the rental programs, the rental licenses?
Well, you know, as far as it is, you know, growth in the region coming in in the region, how should they deal with that? How should they deal with growth with smart growths?
So smart growth is is being careful to not abuse your resources. So if the land use is is forty percent of the lot, you don't expand on that. You try to maintain that. You try to maintain the large oaks on the lot and work around that so that you can continue with drainage and not have issues. You could put some restrictions on what, you know, you could still use your lot because it's your land, but at the same time, you know, we could look at how to make it more viable so that families could move into these homes. But you can't tell a contractor what to do. You buy a lot, you have the right to build the house you want, and that should be everybody's right, including my own. What kind of home you built is your business. What you do with that house, though, when it's sold, is another story. So what I'm trying to say is, if you're trying to get a rental permit, this is where, let's look at how many rental permits are out there. And how many do we really wanna give out every year? And at what point do we wanna start limiting the permits?
And how many short-term rentals are there on the Alba Palms right now?
This is where the data I mentioned. So there was a study done, I believe, and the council members did bring it up. I did not request to see that document. Um, one study was done. I I don't know if there were more. But I've heard numbers from council members during public meetings. Somebody mentioned thirty percent are residents. And the rest are a mix of rentals and second homes. So what is that ratio? I don't know exactly. We could look at the data. Maybe there's research. Um, we could look into that. I I would love to know what that number really is. I, that would be really good to know. But the fact that there's, I was, we heard the numbers of thirty, thirty-one percent resident only. This is where I think we have to do something. We don't want it to be twenty percent in four years, do we? Imagine twenty percent only of the houses, single-family homes or residential, that would not be good. So we need to put some kind of limit on the trend going downwards.
Okay, what would be the that limit ideally?
Well, I think that's not really up to me. It's up to a discussion with um with the rest of the council, but also with people who have done the research, look at the data, and look at the historical trend. If thirty years ago we were at sixty percent residents and now we're at thirty, then we're gonna be basically Wrigley's um Beach in North Carolina where they went to, I don't know how many residents they have left, but it's an entirely rental island. And so I do have ideas about this, and I don't know if you want me to share them today with you.
Go for it.
Um, my suggestions would be banning things doesn't work because people get around bans. It's just a fair compromise. Um, the compromise, you know, would be, you know, the trend is is, you know, there are so many permits you could get a year. And at the same time, if um somebody buys a property, a house on the Isle of Palms and moves in, let's say, from Connecticut, and is not gonna use that house, which was traditionally used as a rental house, you take that permit, put it in a pool, and we have a rental pool permit so that we recycle the permits. And that way, we don't give out that many or any more permits at that point. But there's, it's not like you can't get one. But you're, it's gonna be taking longer to get it. So that it's not an automatic, yeah, sure, you have a rental permit, it's permit. That we don't have to do. That is not a, you know, that is something the city could look into.
And how many rest- resident resident occupied homes are there on the Alba Palms?
Mr. Washington, I really don't know the data. I wish I did. I could look into it and get back to you, but for that, we would have to ask um city's manager, who might have that data.
Oh, yeah, that's right. Uh, and let me ask you this. You said this quote, however, we have our wonderful staff to oversee our safety, and this is something that's important to all residents. I would like to hear what worries our residents and be the voice on their council, on council. What are the other worries that you hear about on 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 the island as far as issues?
I've heard ma- many people talk about traffic. And I've had some people suggest, make some traffic suggestions. And there's some wonderful ideas out there, and I think we should really explore quite a few good ones that I've heard about traffic in particular on busy days. Um, you know, something like a traffic circle versus a traffic light to get on and off the island. A very brilliant neighbor mentioned that one. And I thought, well, you know, I'm trying to visualize that. You know, ha- you know, the double-lane circles that we see around Ion and, you know, Mathis Ferry, they work really well. You don't have traffic back, you know. So that, yeah, and that, so you know what? That's not a bad idea. Why not explore it with with people who who um are experts in this field. It's just thoughts like that that we could bring forth and, you know, put some ease on the traffic.
And you was on the island, and speaking of which, uh, you said this too, quote, by working together, one of my objectives, objectives, that is, would be to get an EMS station on the island. Where exactly would the station be located?
I think the ideal location for something like this is Breach Inlet. It would serve both islands. It's a county project, so the county would have to approve this. But we are the largest taxpayers to the, you know, so, but you know, so between Sullivan's and Isle of Palms, we could both have that EMS station right there. And if you look at the summer months, this is not a bad idea. It would serve not only the residents, but the visitors as well.
I happened to walk over the Breach Inlet Bridge just a couple of months ago when it was cold as well. But uh, let me ask you, what do you think the cost of that EMS station would be to the taxpayers?
It's a county. It would be a county cost. And the taxpayers are us as well. So this is something I would have to explore. I am not an expert in the cost of putting an EMS station. I'm pretty sure it's costly, but this is where restoring our relationships with state with the state is really important with our neighbors and working together to better the lives of everybody in the community is quite important. And, you know, it's not just for residents of both islands. You know, when you think of all the states, that all the visitors and also all the residents of South Carolina from Mount Pleasant to Somerville come to the beach, this is gonna be a win-win for them too. This is safety for them. Something happens on the island by the time they get off the, you know, it really is a safety issue.
And who do you think would bid on this type of project?
Um, who would bid on it?
Yes, ma'am.
Anyway, that's a question to ask for the city administrator. They would probably put it out. The county has a project similar to this in every city. So, you know, we're just the one city that doesn't have an EMS.
Oh, and let me ask you, uh, Miss Nadine, the last question here. What do you think the IOP will look like in the next five to ten years?
Well, it's up to us today to look at where it's gone the last five years. And if we wanna change the direction and go a little bit back to the way things you, you know, used to be, it is now the time to stop the trend towards excessive bureaucracy. That's just, and there's a chance to do it now. We could look like we did five, ten years ago if we did some good management.
How transparent and accountable will you be if elected to council?
As transparent as I've been the last five years as a board chair, I am, there's nothing to hide. So I don't believe, you know, of course, you cannot discuss personnel contracts in open session. If there's a contract and there's two bids, we need to discuss those because those are private matters. But everything else should be discussed in open session. So what that does in many ways is people do watch what they say a bit more. That is true compared to executive session. You're less comfortable. You may not be always politically correct sometimes, which is, you know, but it is what's needed. And it's eventually, if there are good intentions from everybody, having open discussions is a good thing. All the ideas, I, it's better to share nine people sharing their thoughts together. Um, and then making a decision together versus people not knowing what's going on.
Nadine DF, thank you so much for your time. And again, welcome to the award-winning Quinton's Post-Subs.
Thank you very much, Mr. Washington, for having me. I appreciate it.
You're very welcome.